Frigidaire. It means the first electric refrigerator. The first compact electric range. Now, there's the Frigidaire Gallery Range with Symmetry Double Ovens. It's designed to cook multiple dishes at multiple temperatures so you can prepare the entire meal at the same time. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Hi, I'm John Malice. Welcome to this live edition of Connect With Me on the showroom floor at Ventura TV on this day. Today, we're talking politics. We have the newly-elected Fresno City Councilmember District Number One, replacing Blonge Jong. She takes office in January. She's here to answer your phone calls. 436 MEET TV, option 11. Second half hour, we're talking water with Doug Vegum. Back in a moment. And welcome back to the program here on a Friday morning on the showroom floor at Ventura TV. Glad to be here. The weekend is upon us and it felt good. The rain came down yesterday. I wish it would rain more often. Maybe it'll rain sometime this weekend or next week, but I kind of doubt it. Anyway, rain is supposed to be good luck. And today, we're talking politics. Maybe that had something to do with these races. Anyway, you're watching us on Comcast Channel 187, 43.6, and now, my friends, 13.1. And you can watch the replay at 2 o'clock on the YouTube channel, 13.6, and then 8 o'clock tonight, the replay on 13.5. That would be Biz TV. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about some of these political races, and we know the election is over, but one of these races, I mean, it's not over yet. They're still counting votes. I'm talking about the Tashira and Costa race for Congress. That congressional seat up for grabs. Costa's been in office for 10 years. He was in Sacramento for the better part of 30, serving in the state legislature. Now, Tashira came out of nowhere. He had no financial support from the Republican Party. He had no advertising. He came out of nowhere. Right now, he trails by somewhat, I think the figure is around 86 votes, but there's still about 5,000 votes to count in Merced, Madera, and Fresno County. Anything could happen, so stay tuned for that one. Gomoyan and Hill, that one came down to the wire, but I think Gomoyan is pretty much the winner in that one. And then, just recently, Esmeralda Soraya edged out, and I mean edged out, Carrie Cannellano for that District One City Council race, trying to replace Blonge Jong. Let's go to the videotape, my friends, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. This was a hard-fought campaign, and you might recall during the campaign, during some of this time, Esmeralda Soraya rode her bicycle door-to-door, trying to round up votes. And there she is, talking to some voters on the campaign trail not all that long ago. And so, she fought a hard campaign against Cannellano, who went door-to-door as well. This one was so tight, they didn't know who the winner was. In the end, after, you know, the election was over, Cannellano had a slight lead, but then when they counted up the rest of the votes, it was Esmeralda Soraya who came out on top. Recently, she has worked for Michael Rubio, Henry T. Perea, and right now, she is also teaching part-time over there at Fresno City College. She is the newly-elected City Councilperson. She is here today. Live in our studio right now is Esmeralda Soraya. You're welcome to call in and ask her any questions you want. You know, the hot topic right now at City Hall, of course, is water. The rebate, or recharge, not the rebate, but the Recharge Fresno meetings are now over. The council meets next Thursday to decide which plan they're going to adopt, or which one they're interested in. And by the way, we'll be talking to Doug Vegum second half of the show about that. But Esmeralda's here. We're happy she is. She's on a tight schedule, so call in. She's only here until 10:30, my friends. 436 MEET TV, option 11. Back in a moment.
As a pro athlete, I've played on green grass my entire career and was stunned to find a product that could make my home look as good as the turf I've grown to love. Turf Medics is a revolutionary new turf coloring system designed to reduce watering and mowing. Call 1-888-936-0444, or visit the website at www.turfmedics.com to learn more about Turf Medics. Buy ProTurf, the real experts in real green grass.
And by the way, coming out of that commercial, we are glad to welcome home here to Connect With Me, a brand-new sponsor called Turf Medics. Of course, that company is partially owned by Lorenzo Neal, the former running back for the Fresno State Bulldogs. And of course, he played the NFL and even played in one Super Bowl. So today's show is sponsored by Turf Medics. Go out there and check them out. Hey, this is the company that you can hire to make your lawn look pretty and look green without having to water all that much. Anyway, Esmeralda Soraya is here. I'm glad you're here. Congratulations. I guess, is it official now? You've actually won the seat?
Well, it's not official official, but the last count does still show me up ahead. The votes are still being counted, but we know that the trend continues to be my way, and more recently, my opponent did concede.
Yeah.
But the results won't be certified until later in the month.
What's, or how many votes separate you?
Now, it's about 380 votes, something like that.
Yeah, 380 votes. And still, they're counting, but it's going in your favor, and that's why Carrie Cannellano conceded. Did he call to congratulate you?
You know, he actually showed up to the Fresno City Clerk's office where they handed out the results at 3:00 this past Wednesday. And so, we had an opportunity to chat very briefly, and he congratulated me, and I congratulated him as well for a great run campaign.
You know, I don't think, you know, this is one of those races that I really like because it, even though it was hard-fought and it was close, Esmeralda, I don't think it got nasty really at any point. Not, you know, like, not like any of the other races, not like Gomoyan and Hill. Do you, do you really think it got ugly at any point?
It didn't get ugly as, you know, in comparison to the Gomoyan race. I do think that there were some attempts to make some different, you know, some differences between the...
Discredit you, maybe?
But, you know, I, for, at least in my campaign, we stuck to the issues, and I think that's what was very positive about my campaign personally.
Do you think it's better to run a clean campaign than to lash out at your opponent? Does it make for a better race, do you think? Because although, you know, when you lash out, of course, that makes headlines, even on this show. I mean, we pounce on it right away. We love that kind of stuff, but you guys kept it clean, though.
Yeah, and that was a decision that I made because I could've gone the other way, but I think, you know, what is telling about my personality and how I will govern is that I will stay focused on the issues that really matter to the residents of District One. And that's what I did consistently throughout the last 14 months.
I mean, let's face it, anybody who runs for office, it doesn't matter who it is, it's, you can dig up something on anybody. I don't care who it is. I don't know that there's anybody walking, living, or breathing that's squeaky-clean. So if that's the standard, then if you're going to say, "We need squeaky-clean people," I'm not saying you're dirty, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that nobody would be in office. You know what I'm saying? Would you agree with that analogy, kind of? Because we tend to, you know, promote races where one opponent is really tearing down the next one.
Yeah, and I think, I think people will always have strengths and weaknesses, and so your opponents will always try to point out to those weaknesses.
Right.
Doesn't mean that, you know, the person is a terrible person. I think that as long as you, you know, have a message, and you're listening to the voters, and you're connecting with them, I think in the end, that's what really resonates with people.
You should be judged based on your character and your voting record, right? I mean, the issues.
Yeah.
And are you, are you feeling, right now, I know you're feeling elation, you're feeling happiness, you're feeling, are you feeling overwhelmed a little bit?
Not yet. I probably will. I feel very excited and just blessed to have the privilege to represent not only the residents of District One, but also residents of the city of Fresno.
Are you surprised that you won?
I knew that it was going to be a tight race, but I had every inch of confidence that my team was doing an excellent job, you know, talking to voters and getting our message across.
What was your mindset when you first decided to run? I mean, did you think in your wildest dreams you could win, or was your mindset, "Okay, I'm going to try this and see what happens. I'll just throw the chips up in the air and let them fall where they may"?
I knew that it was going to be a lot of hard work going into it, because I've been involved in politics. But, you know, I did what every candidate begins to do, is go and talk to different community leaders, different groups, to try to get their support. And I did feel confident that I was gaining the support necessary to be very competitive.
Right.
And while I was not supported by a number of the council members or the mayor, I felt that my work ethic and what I wanted to deliver for District One would resonate and would help me be successful.
Right. Okay, so we're talking with Esmeralda Soraya. 436 MEET TV, option 11. Better hurry, my friends. Time is running out. She's here for a short period, and then she has to go and teach over at Fresno City College. And we appreciate the fact that she took the time to come here and talk to us on Connect With Me. She's been here three times now. Hey, we're glad about that and hope she comes back many more times. She's welcome here. Call in. Time's running out. Back in a moment.
This fall, there is a place, familiar and inviting, timeless and warm. MEET TV, a place all your own, that you can call home.
Hi, honey, I'm home.
This fall, home is where you'll find me.
You mean to tell me that's all there is to it?
That's all.
MEET TV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
Back here on the program. And Lorenzo Neal is one of our sponsors here on the program, Connect With Me on MEET TV Fresno today. Glad to have him along. He is the owner of Turf Medics, that terrific company. Hey, they were guests here on the program not too long ago, talking about that wonderful system they have. And it's an exclusive system where they can paint your lawn green, and it looks like you can fake everybody out. You can make everyone think you're watering 24/7, and that you're really a water waster when you're not, because you're using Turf Medics. Anyway, you like that little pitch?
It's a good one.
You may try that out myself. Turf Medics, try them out, call them and see what Lorenzo has to say there, and you can make your lawn look beautiful. Okay, what's the big issue there in District One, in your opinion? Issue number one, the biggest.
Well, the biggest issue that I heard as I walked throughout the 14 months was safety of the neighborhoods.
Really?
There's still a lot going on, property crimes. Not too long ago, we had a stabbing during a zombie crawl that happened in Tower District, and another murder not too long ago before that. And so, things are still happening in our neighborhoods, and people are very concerned. And so, that was one of the main issues that I talked about, and I will continue to talk about and try to bring some solutions to the problem.
We got a phone call here. Hope it's a good one. Good morning, caller. You're on with Esmeralda Soraya. Your question, please.
A quick question to Esmeralda, number one. I commend her for a clean campaign, and also having a refreshing face. I guess we needed something like, kind of, be an assurance to us that everything was going to be kind of calm. But I commend her for her clean campaign.
Yeah. What's your question for her? Do you have a question?
My question for her?
Yeah.
My question is, she ran a real clean campaign, and I think a lot of the people around wanted that, because people get tired of all this negative stuff that they pick out of her. But I commend her on the clean campaign.
Okay.
That's my question to her.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So, that must make you feel good, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I did stay true to what the residents wanted to hear, and I think that it helped in the long run.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you a question now. You're, I mean, you're one of the most pleasant people who's ever appeared on this program. You have a very pleasant demeanor. Don't, don't get bashful on me. Now, your face is turning red. She's shy. Anyway, after this is all over and you're in office in January, will you be as approachable with the voters and the people? Will you listen as much as you did during the campaign? Because you're a good listener, and you're very approachable. Will that change?
That will not change. People have access to my cellphone number, so I'm still getting calls directly from voters, and that's how I want to remain. I want to remain accessible. That is my commitment to the voters of District One.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're going to stay, you're going to remain the same?
Yeah.
Approachable, and you're going to listen to what the voters have to say in your district? How do you solve the crime problem? You put more cops on the street? What do you do? Because it's a tough, I mean, you know, I've been in this town since 1996. Jerry Dyer took over as chief, I think, in 2001 or something. And you know, it seems like every year, you know, we're going to get a handle on this, but they never quite get it.
Yeah. And public safety is not, for me, is not just more cops patrolling. That is, that is not solving the problem. I believe it's a comprehensive thing. We start with small things, fixing our streetlights in a timely fashion, which we still have an issue with. It sometimes takes months to fix our streetlights. Making sure that we're building our neighborhood watch programs. We need to do a better job about strengthening our neighborhood watch programs, making sure that we are cleaning graffiti as soon as it's happening, because guess what? It attracts perpetrators to do additional graffiti if we just let it sit there. So those small things make a difference. But another thing is really economic development and job creation. If we're not addressing the poverty that is related to a lot of the crime that is happening, we're going to continue to see crime throughout our neighborhood. So it's much more than just cops, you know, out in our neighborhoods patrolling. That is helpful. I do like to see, you know, what we're seeing in the Tower District, which is cops on bikes is something that I supported during the primary. I believe I mentioned it when I came here. It is something that we're seeing now. City College is also, has moved towards having a bike unit. It helps with community policing and more presence. And I think it's bridging those gaps and looking at public safety much more comprehensively.
Yeah, I know you teach over at Fresno City College. Do you feel safe in that area when you go out there? You're going out there during the day, but do you feel safe?
Yeah, I do. I don't live actually too far from City College. I do generally feel safe. But, you know, when I do hear comments on Facebook, there is a specific page that talks about crime, it concerns me. You know, sometimes those issues, you're like, well, all these small issues are being, you know, spoken about on this page, and so I think it freaks people out. But I think that it can create concern, and we need to really figure out how we're going to look at this issue much more comprehensively.
Yeah, and you need cops, because you have to have them deal head-on with the gang problem. And, you know, District One is not unlike any other. There's a, there's a gang presence there.
Yeah.
And that's how you deal with it, with more police?
Well, like I said, it's a combination of things. Because if it's dark, you're going to probably see additional criminal activity. And another thing that I mentioned even in part of my plan was cameras in high-crime areas.
Oh, yeah. You like that idea?
I do, because I think that it will deter people from, you know, committing some crimes.
Yeah.
And people will get caught.
Yeah. Okay, we're talking with Esmeralda Soraya. Got to take a break here, and I will not fail to mention our sponsor today, Turf Medics, sponsored by Lorenzo Neal. He's the owner of Turf Medics. And do yourself a favor, it is a one-of-a-kind product that can paint your lawn green and make it stay that way all year round. Back with our phone calls, you, 436 MEET TV, option 11, and our wonderful guest here today in a moment.
Ladies' night was started in his honor. Bar stools pulled themselves out for him. The only thing Chuck Norris is afraid of is her. Cheers is the most memorable bar in the world. You may not always watch comedy, but when you do, watch Cheers.
MEET TV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
Attention, all units. We have reports of two motorcycle cops protecting California's highway.
That's for us, good buddy.
The men of CHIPS are on MEET TV.
Hi, I'm John Baker.
I'm John Baker.
It's Officer Baker.
He's the blonde one.
Hi there.
How's your ponchero, man?
Frank Ponchero.
I'm Frank Ponchero.
And he's the one who's Eric Estrada.
There's no way I wouldn't remember a name like that.
Catch the blonde one and the one who's Eric Estrada on CHIPS.
Now on MEET TV Fresno, Xfinity 187.
Hey, back here on Connect With Me. Today's program sponsored by, we're glad to have him, it's a brand-new sponsor here. Glad to have Turf Medics and Lorenzo Neal onboard on Connect With Me. And you're watching us on Comcast, 187, 43.6, and now 13.1. Esmeralda Soraya is here now. All right. The other big issue in the city, and I have to ask you about this, because you, you know, prior to your, during your campaign, I guess, you said you were against the higher water rates. Do you still stand firm on that?
Well, I have concerns with the higher water rates, because there are a number of people in District One on a fixed income and are in a low income that will be hurt by such increases. I know that there's, they went back to try to reassess how big the project and give much more input, or get input from the community. And so, that's what they've been doing in the city of Fresno. I'm not sure if I'll get to vote on the issue, but I'm definitely keeping a close eye on it, making sure that I'm well-informed, because I do want to make sure that I'm an advocate for District One residents.
Yeah, those District One residents, especially in that whole area there, you have some very low-income people that are on fixed incomes.
Lot of seniors.
And a lot of seniors as well won't be able to afford that higher rate. Caller, you're on the air. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm just kind of curious, conversations I'm listening to, why you use the terminology, the street terminology of cops rather than the professional terminology of police officer?
Okay.
That's my only question.
All right. We can say, listen, that shows no lack of respect for the Police Department. Jerry Dyer's been on this program. I've known Jerry Dyer since 1996. I think the Police Department is doing a great job with the manpower and woman power that they have on the streets, even though they've had some cutbacks.
Yeah.
They do a terrific job, and they have the district policing units to try to crack down on gangs. And I'm going to tell you something, if you think that this city is in trouble now to a certain extent with some of these gangs, imagine what it would be like if we had a lesser Police Department than what we have. Am I right?
Yeah, that's correct. And we also have to see the numbers. I'm a big supporter of our Police Department.
Me, too.
I was actually the candidate endorsed by our police officers and very proud of it. And one of the issues is that we do have a lower amount of police officers for the size of the city that we are. We're over half a million.
I know.
City, and our square mileage is huge. And so, when we're talking about response times, those are factors that play into how long it'll take for a police officer to respond to certain criminal activity.
In fact, Dyer was here, and I'm not saying this because he's not here or was here, but because it's true. If you look at Jerry Dyer, he's done a terrific job on the force. And right now, at some point, he's going to retire. He's going to be out of there. He's not going to want to do this forever. It's a very stressful job. You know, it's like an 18-hour-a-day job to be a police chief in this town. Jerry's done it. You got to wonder, you know, what this city's going to do when he retires, because, you know, at this point, it seems like no one can do the job like him, and nobody is up for the job when he retires. They tried to fill his spot when he tried to retire, and they couldn't find anybody. Do you find that interesting?
I do find it interesting.
Yeah? Okay, all right. Caller, you're on the air. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that COPS is actually an acronym for Constable Unpatribled, so it's an actual word, it's not a slang or anything.
Right, I understand that. But I, you know, the other previous caller was trying to suggest I was disrespecting the police officers, not in any way, shape, or form. Okay, let's put that issue to bed. We're talking about water rates that's going to affect you and your pocketbook, maybe if the city of Fresno has its way. So they had these meetings here, and we're running out of time. I want to get to this issue here, because I know you got to leave. But Recharge Fresno, they had about, what, four or five meetings, and then last Monday, they had the one at City Hall. And so, prior to, I want to put up the rates, what they were in 2013 to a certain extent. That figure is just a little bit off. It was just a little bit over $24. And then, fast forward to 2016, and the rates were going to be over $48. Okay, so then Doug, enter Doug Vegum. Doug Vegum got the, he went through several court hearings, he won every court battle, got the petitions, Esmeralda, and then they signed an agreement that the city would not raise the rates. Now, the city's got these recharge meetings, and they've got three proposals on the table, and the rates that they're proposing are almost equal to what the rates that you just saw on the screen. So we're back to square one now.
Well, and I think the issue is, it is going to be how much residents can afford, but also, we know we have to invest in our aging water infrastructure. There's no question about that.
Right, but in the fifth year, according to this proposal, it's up to $52.
Yeah, no, and I know that there's a lot of people in my district that are concerned about the water rates, and that's something that I've been talking about. We have to figure out how we're going to create a program that will, you know, help some of these families.
Right. And so, at this point, if you had to vote on this thing, how would you do it?
Well, there's still some questions that I have. I'm concerned about the size of the project, and I believe that to a certain degree, there's some questions that haven't been totally answered. I've attended some of these public hearings.
The recharge?
Yeah.
How many did you go to?
I've attended, I think, two of them. I didn't attend the last one, which I was hoping to, but I was busy with the campaign, so it was challenging for me to make it. And I believe that one was the one on the rate structure.
So basically, here's what I hear you saying. You don't have all the facts in front of you yet, because you're not sitting in the seat right now, so you wouldn't know how you're going to vote.
Yeah.
Until you have all the facts in front of you.
That's correct.
But is this a little, I mean, just from what you've seen these, is this a little disturbing here and concern for your residents?
Most definitely. I'm still hearing about the concerns.
Yeah, because the rates that you saw were the old, old ones prior to Doug Vegum, you know, going from 24 to 48. They're talking about going, not only is it above 48, it's like $52. That's quite a jump from 24 to 52. I know it's during a five-year period, but still, you know, it may not be acceptable for some households.
And we got, we have to remember that as a city, we are also responsible for really encouraging more conservation in our community and doing the outreach and education. I don't think that the city of Fresno does enough. I know that more recently, Councilmember Brand proposed something, so I'm looking forward to really, you know, talking about that issue, more of conservation throughout, and also the city of Fresno being a leader in that effort.
Let me ask you, we got a couple of minutes left here, and ask you about your alignment with other city council members. You're not a conservative. You lean more with our buddy here, Sal Cantera, who's been in here, I can't even count how many times he's been a guest here on our show. So, and you're more along the lines of a Blonge Jong. How will you get along with other council members that are a little more conservative, like a Steve Brandow, a Lee Brand, who's leading this water charge? How will you get along with him? And if you disagree with him on this water thing, how will you come to a meeting of the minds?
Yeah. Well, I think that what we need to do is work on those issues that we do agree on, because I am sure that there are many that we will agree on. I do believe that we all want the city of Fresno to move forward in a better direction, in a direction where we're creating more economic opportunities. And so, we have to find those common, that common ground, and it exists. But it's about communication, it's about coming together and putting our, sometimes our political views aside. And that's what I look forward to. I'm excited about it. I've already talked to a number of them, and so I'm excited to be able to have a meeting And so I'm excited to be able to have a meeting with them and get to know them a little bit better personally. So that we can, you know, have more conversations and communication about the issues that we have an interest in.
I'm looking at that clock, you better run. We've got to go too, and it's, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to let the public know that I called Esmeralda last minute and she's got to be over teaching at Fresno City College at 11 o'clock. We're glad she stopped by for a few minutes to talk to us. And once you're in the seat after January sometime, we're not going to call you in January, but, you know, a couple of months after you're in office, come by and see us again.
Yeah, I will definitely come back. Thank you so much, John.
Good luck. Drive safe.
I love you.
Hang on, hang on, not yet. Back with more here on Connect with Me on MeTV Fresno. Today's program sponsored by TurfMedics and the owner over there, Lorenzo Neal, thanks to him. Back in just a moment.
As a pro athlete, I've played on green grass my entire career and was stunned to find a product that could make my home look as good as the turf I've grown to love. TurfMedics is a revolutionary new turf coloring system designed to reduce watering and mowing. Call 1-888-936-0444 or visit the website at www.turfmedics.com to learn more about TurfMedics. Buy ProTurf, the real experts in real green grass.
Frigidaire. We introduce the first home freezer, the first pulsator agitator washer. And now we introduce the Frigidaire Orbit Clean Dishwasher, designed with a unique wash arm that gives you four times more water coverage for a consistently better clean. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Welcome to a new beginning. An adventure that goes well beyond passive diversion. Empowering through exploration. Engaging your passions. Inspiring with lives lived outdoors. Come with us. Untamed Sports TV.
You can find Untamed Sports on over-the-air channel 13.8.
The Ballad of Andy and Barney. Andy and Barney were lawmen, bravest you ever did see. Born never crook in the record book to stay out of Mayberry. They were the law.
Yes, they were the law and they didn't know fear.
The Andy Griffith Show.
I guess to sum it up, you could say there's three reasons why there's so little crime in Mayberry. There's Andy and there's me. Baby makes three.
Now on MeTV Fresno.
It's Sully and Russ on The Big Biz Show.
It's your biz.
And maybe they'll start listening to Baldwin McCullough.
Now, before you make any money moves, check in with the brain trust.
And you are starting your week off right.
Back here on the program on Connect with Me, thanks to Lorenzo Neal and TurfMedics for being a brand-new sponsor here on your program, MeTV Fresno, Connect with Me. And our next guest is Dan Rivera, and he works out there at the Madera Community College Center, and they have a film festival starting today. It goes today, it goes tomorrow, and some great films will be on tap. Hey, good to see you, Dan.
Good morning, John.
Good of you to stop by and be here.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
All right, tell us about this film festival. I've got this, it's probably going to, we're probably going to see the reflection of the glass, but I'm going to try to hold it up there a little bit. And tell us what this film festival is about.
Well, this film festival is titled Ask Nice, a John Ford Film Festival. And we're going to be showing three different films, one tonight and two tomorrow. This evening, we're going to show The Grapes of Wrath at 6:30. And tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, we're going to show How Green Was My Valley. And at 11:30, we're going to end the film festival with John Wayne's movie, The Searchers.
Now, Grapes of Wrath, this film is one of the all-time classic movies. We've talked about this, I believe, with our film expert, Becky Cinema, who's here once a month, talking about the movie industry and she's well-connected. And Grapes of Wrath, why did you choose that movie? It is a classic. I'll bet a lot of the younger generation, they haven't seen that film and probably don't even know what it's about.
Well, definitely a classic and I think one of the best representations of John Ford's cinematic genius, really. It's the 75th anniversary this year of the publication of the novel, The Grapes of Wrath. So there's been a lot of talk in critical circles and such about the novel and also the movie. I think that even though a lot of young people may not have read the book or may not have seen the movie, many of them have read the book as it's required reading in most high schools. So I think there'll be an interest.
Still, even today, it's required reading?
Absolutely, absolutely. And John Ford, I think, does a wonderful job in taking the novel and making it into a movie that really is quite touching. It's challenging and it really shows America and Americans at a critical point in our history.
I'm a little bit surprised that it's still required reading in high schools. I'm glad that it is because it's a wonderful book, but are you surprised that that is well?
I don't know, I remember reading the book.
Considering what's going on in the public school system today.
Well, I remember reading the book myself in high school and I consider it one of the eight, nine books that changed my life, really.
How so?
Well, I think The Grapes of Wrath sort of takes a mirror, what John Steinbeck does is takes a mirror and holds it up to us and says, "America, this is who you are and this is who you can be." And so I think that it resonates with Americans from all different classes, Americans from all different times.
Yeah, it just doesn't resonate with one group of people here in the Central Valley. It resonates with everyone, you think, every class.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Every ethnic group, you think.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And I think that's true with the other films that we're showing also. Tomorrow morning, as we show How Green Was My Valley and then with The Searchers, I think we're able to see a lot of recurring themes in John Ford's work. Themes such as the family, the loss of family, the breakup of the family, the opportunity for redemption. You see that constantly throughout his films.
Yeah. Hey, I want you to talk about some of the stars that are in Grapes of Wrath.
Oh, well, of course, Grapes of Wrath stars Henry Fonda, you know, and I think one of his most iconic roles, most known for that, I think, won an Academy Award for it. Jane Darwell, who plays Ma Joad as well, won an Academy Award for it. And we see in The Grapes of Wrath, many of the actors that come from the stable of actors that John Ford worked with so often in his films. Olive Carey, Harry Carey, Harry Carey Jr., of course, John Wayne.
Why'd he pick Henry Fonda?
Well, Henry Fonda, you know, had just come off of Young Mr. Lincoln and had done very well both in the film version and also the stage version of it. And I think he had one of those faces, he had the everyman face that I think that people can identify with. He was a lot like Tom Hanks in a way.
In his day.
In his day, in the sense that the general audience felt comfortable with him and were willing to go wherever his character would take people.
All right, and the other film is starring John Wayne.
The Searchers.
Everybody's favorite actor, right? And you don't question why they picked him?
Well, John Wayne, you know, I think that there are some key parts in The Searchers, both spoken lines and also just acting through facial expression that John Wayne demonstrates that if anyone ever doubts that John Wayne was an actor, I ask them to see The Searchers because John Wayne, I think, does his best acting in that picture. It's definitely, in my opinion, the best John Wayne movie ever made.
You think this is the best John Wayne movie ever made?
I think so.
Really? That's a bold statement.
Well, I really do. I think The Searchers.
I've seen a lot of his movies and I don't know. He's good in all of them.
Oh, he definitely, definitely he is. But I think that he interacts so well with both his co-stars, but also with, you know, what's going with the story itself in The Searchers, you know?
So this is the Madera Community College Center, free parking, free admission, free popcorn.
That's right.
So how are you guys making money off this?
Oh, this isn't a moneymaker at all.
Why are you doing it?
We're doing it for a couple of reasons. One is Stephen Barili and I, who's my partner in the film festival, teaches English out at the college, discovered a couple of years ago, we both have a great love of movies and we think that this is an opportunity to add to the intellectual verve of the campus. And also, it's just fun, you know? Madera's a small town. The community college is located about a mile off the highway out in the country.
In the sticks?
And it's, well, no, not quite the sticks, but it's only a mile out from the highway. But it's an opportunity.
I've just given you hard.
No, that's all right. But it is an opportunity for people to come out on an evening or a morning for a free show. It's something you can do for free out in Madera, and I hope a lot of young people will come to it.
Yeah, I hope so. And so again, this one is going to be Friday, The Grapes of Wrath, 6:30 tonight, Madera Community College Center. Saturday, what time, 9 o'clock in the morning?
9 o'clock, doors open at 8:30.
How Green Was My Valley?
How Green Was My Valley.
Okay, and the next one is, takes place at 11:30, and that's the John Wayne movie, The Searchers.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming on.
Thanks for having me.
Dan Rivera, I appreciate it. My pleasure meeting you for the first time.
All right.
And come back on the show again sometime.
I will, thank you.
Love to have you and good luck with this one. I think you're doing a good deed in adding to the intellect to the state community college system.
Hopefully so, thank you.
I hope so. All right, it's tomorrow, or tonight and tomorrow at the Madera Community College State Center. Hey, we're back with more of Connect with Me. Doug Vegum is our guest, talking water. It's going to affect your pocketbook. Stay tuned and pay attention. Back in just a moment. And by the way, today's program sponsored by TurfMedics and Lorenzo Neal, our brand-new sponsor. Thank you very much.
It's almost time.
Now, we'll find out once and for all about Clark Kent, Superman.
Look, up in the sky, it's a bird, it's a plane, it's a TV show.
Yes, but who is he? What's his name?
He's Superman.
Golly, Clark, won't that be wonderful seeing Superman?
Fighting a never-ending battle for truth, justice, and television the MeTV way.
No one can do the things that Superman does.
The adventures of Superman.
Now on MeTV Fresno, Xfinity 187.
As a pro athlete, I've played on green grass my entire career and was stunned to find a product that could make my home look as good as the turf I've grown to love. TurfMedics is a revolutionary new turf coloring system designed to reduce watering and mowing. Call 1-888-936-0444 or visit the website at www.turfmedics.com to learn more about TurfMedics. Buy ProTurf, the real experts in real green grass.
Tough TV is the first digital broadcast network to offer first-run original programming targeted at men. Tough TV features content that men are passionate about. Sports.
No matter what happens in the fight, oh, good right-left. Coming on strong.
Lifestyle.
What we've done is we've created a technology that allows us to run video games in extremely powerful servers in server centers.
Drama.
Did you cause this?
Reality.
Welcome to this edition of I for an I. Now, today in court, we have the case of the reckless brother who tried to unravel his own family ties.
Talk.
Pam, we have a winner.
Specials.
I'm Dick Butkus, welcome to the Butkus Awards TV special.
And movies.
Everybody, everybody, put your hands on the table.
Sports, lifestyle, drama, reality, talk, specials, and movies. Are you tough enough?
Back here on the program, I want to mention that today's program here on Connect with Me on Comcast 187 436 and 131, sponsored by TurfMedics. Of course, making your lawn look very green without water, well, with very little water. And you can make it look that way all year round and your neighbors will be jealous because they're thinking, hey, this guy next door to me, he's wasting water. No, you're using TurfMedics. Thanks to our buddy Lorenzo Neal over there, the former running back for the Fresno State Bulldogs and of course, the NFL. All right, we're talking water rates again here with Doug Vegum. And I'll tell you why during the course of the rest of the program as to why Doug is here. I want to put those water rates up again and you're going to see, okay, the rates are off just by, just a slight margin, okay? August of 2013, you were paying slightly more than that, but you know what? We got that number from the Fresno City website. Okay, that number should be just a little over $24 and some change. Now, fast forward to August of 2016 and you're looking at a cost of $48.34. Well, enter Doug Vegum. He went through all these court battles, won all the court battles, then he got all the petitions, he was going to put this thing on the ballot, there he is right there. And he struck a deal with the city of Fresno that the city would not raise your water rates. That was the deal for not putting this thing on the ballot and letting you, the voter, decide. So Doug is here. Doug, the recharge meetings has the city talking about raising the water rates, not only equivalent to what we just saw, but even higher according to three little plans that I see here on this piece of paper.
That's right. Well, if you look at...
How can that be? I think they struck a deal with you. I thought they signed a deal that they can't raise the water rates.
Well, I did too, and so did the great Indian nations of the 1870s think that they signed the deal.
What happened?
Well, look, they think they're living to the letter of the law.
They who?
The city of Fresno.
Okay.
And they, instead of putting a working group together where we sit shoulder to shoulder, they signed the deal and agreed to this, but they decided to interpret it their own way and it became a dog and pony show, a medicine man show, and we'll stop and we'll tell you what is good for you.
Well, Mark Standriff was here. And the way I understood that these recharge meetings were to be conducted is that everyone had a shot, and I think there were four meetings. Everyone in the public had a chance to voice their opinion. And at the end, you know, everybody agreed that we have to raise the rates to a certain extent, but they have to be affordable. Well, apparently that's not the case because they're raising the rates equivalent to and even more.
That's right.
Than before. So I thought your deal, didn't your deal say in the fine print that they can't do this?
Six months. Six months to give them the opportunity to really look and see what their needs are and really what we could get by with and really trim the rates and have a good system, a system that is in continuing working order and also planning for growth. And added system that they do want to add to the system and no one is saying and no one is denying they shouldn't add to the system. We're not saying that. What we're saying is they're grabbing too much, too fast, it's too big, and they want us to pay for it. And that's wrong. And that's what we, that was the first thing that they did last year that we said is wrong. And they seem to just, these dog and pony show circuses that they've been putting on, these forums that they call...
Why do you call them that?
Because they're a one-way conversation. It's just like they're in the ring, the spotlight's on them, and here's the expert. If you've got a question, ask the expert. I got a question. Okay, well, that's good enough, we don't have time, next person, next person. That wasn't what it was supposed to be.
What was it supposed to be?
A working session, like you and I and 100 other people or whatever, sitting down and saying, I got this, I got that, you know, relative information, relative that was pertinent to the situation, not some off-the-wall, let's go look at desultinization, which has come up a few times. Look, that's not feasible for us.
Is this about groundwater or surface water? What is this about?
It's about everything. It's about water, period. How to get water.
Groundwater, surface, I mean, I'm looking through these city documents here that are, these are on the website, I believe, and you know...
No, they're not on the website.
They're not on the website?
No, I got that walking out the door and I had to scan that for you. You couldn't even get that from the city.
Okay, so this is not on the website?
No.
All right, but they talk about groundwater and supplies are dwindling accordingly. In fact, over the last 80 years, groundwater levels have dropped more than 100 feet. So is this about getting groundwater to the city of Fresno or is this about surface water?
Well, first of all, John, no one knows exactly what's happening to our groundwater, even the USGS, United States Geological Service, whose principal mission is to look at all things resource-wise.
Right.
And they have experts who've been doing this for 20-plus years and they say, quote-unquote, this was on the Matty Report, in public, okay, recorded. They don't understand the aquifer under either feet. They don't know how much is coming in from the Sierra Nevadas, they don't know how much is going out, they don't know how big it is, they don't know how big the depth is. How do we know? At the city of Fresno, they don't even have a hydrologist on staff. So how can they all of a sudden become the experts? Now, what is safe to say, and most of the people in the water world, the ag folks, the city folks, it's safe to say that we are taking more water out than is going in. You know something? We really don't know. We really don't know. But we do know something empirically. city folks, it's safe to say that we are taking more water out than is going in. You know something? We really don't know, we really don't know. But we do know something empirically. When you go test a well from one year, ten years later, you can see that that well has depressed that water zone around it. But it's one great big milkshake, okay? You might have depressed your thick milkshake right around your straw, but over on the other side, the level has not diminished that much, and it'll fill your depression up in a matter of minutes if you just stop pulling water up the straw. And we agree with that, but it's not a thing that we're depressing the water zone so all our aquifer will go away. That is a flat-out lie that is being perpetrated by, maybe if not the city, maybe they're saying it in so many words, but whoever is saying it, it's a lie. It's absolutely untrue. We're sitting on 93 million acre-feet of water, that's been accepted by all parties, 93 million.
How do we know that? If we don't know how much water's under there?
Well, that's been, that's the rough estimate, 93 million acre-feet of water.
I wonder how much of that we've used?
Well, not.
Tapped into.
But how much is coming in from the Sierra Nevadas? It's been estimated that 20 million acre-feet come in every year from the Sierra Nevadas in this hydrology zone. So how, but, John.
So is the city, okay, where does the city get most of its water, Doug? Surface water or groundwater?
Currently, we get our, we actually put water in the system from the ground.
So the city gets the majority of its water from the ground?
We, right, and some places in California, such as Reedley, California, 100% of its water is all groundwater. Well, they're sitting right next to the Kings River.
But I want to focus on Fresno. Has Fresno got, gets its water from the ground?
Yes, it does, and it has entitlements to surface water, which it does use, it uses in leaky acres.
But I've heard Mark Standriff sit here and say that that surface water's going down into the ocean.
It's not, that's another fabrication, it doesn't. Let me explain it, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have two sources of surface water. One, we gain from the federal government when they put up Fryett Dam. We had to go to court, Fresno and its fathers went to court back in the 50s, to say, "You took water away from us, because it used to percolate underground, now you put it in the cement-lined canal."
Yeah.
And now it's not percolating. So the federal government was ordered by the state of California to provide the city of Fresno 60,000 acre-feet a year to make up for that lost percolation. That's in the law, that's in the law. They have to do it, it says you shall do it, or you will lose your rights to the state water. All water in California is state water, it doesn't belong to the federal government. They only have the rights that were given to them by the state of California. Okay, now, the other source is the Kings River, and that Kings River is water that is put together by 28 agencies in conjunction with the Corps of Engineers who put the dam up for flood control, and offsetting the flood control.
Isn't that water supposed to go to the farmers?
And, we went out and annexed farmland, and we became farmers.
All right, let's take a call here. Good morning, caller, you're on with Doug Vegum. Caller, turn your TV set down, please.
Hello?
Yeah, turn your TV set down, you're on the air, go ahead.
Hi, I'm calling from Fresno, I've been in Fresno all my life, and when I was a girl, we used to have lots of alkaline ponds, that the water just sat on top. And now, my brother, you know, still lives in the valley, and they're farmers, and they dig their own wells, and now they have to go down 185 feet just to hit a little bit of water.
Wow. Okay, and you have a...
I mean, just in my lifetime, and that's, you know, been the last 40 years, and it's hard for me to understand why the city council and the people of the valley don't see that the mountains don't carry the snow like they used to, they don't, I mean, the rivers don't run like they used to.
Right.
And we have to conserve, and I think there's a lot of people around the valley that do that, but we have to have some sort of water system for all this extra people we have here.
Let me ask you why she's on the phone, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I appreciate your call, and I appreciate you asking those questions, and being observant to the fact that, yeah, there are places where water does go down in areas where there's a lot of pumping. Ag has had to add a lot of pumps and pump a lot of groundwater to make up for what the federal government has taken away from them. And so that has an impact to us. That's why those decisions of the act that created the San Joaquin River to carry salmon has been a very impactful congressional act and a NRDC versus the federal government, where the NRDC made the case that the salmon should be in that river. Okay, I'm not arguing whether or not they should have been, but it's had an effect, and there's been twice as many wells put in from ag in the last few years than there has been in the last 20 years.
Okay.
To make up for that difference. But we're all drawing off the same milkshake, okay?
But there's more drawing from the milkshake, more people drawing from the milkshake.
So no matter what Fresno does.
Yeah.
They're still trying, we can put all the stuff we want back in, but somebody right on the edge of the city can be sucking as much water as they want and taking it right back out. Now, the governor signed this bill that has to be a balanced approach to the water basin. And we say, "Why don't you wait for that to settle in before you come up with these long-term decisions?" Because there's gonna be a lot of things that we and the other ag districts are gonna work together to make this thing work.
You gotta take a break, I think we gotta run a break, because we got a new sponsor here on the program, it's Turf Medics. That's right, make your lawn greener and make it look greener to your neighbors and all those people who drive by your beautiful home and see that green grass with very little water, thanks to Turf Medics and Lorenzo Neal, back in a moment.
As a pro athlete, I've played on green grass my entire career and was stunned to find a product that could make my home look as good as a turf I've grown to love. Turf Medics is a revolutionary new turf coloring system designed to reduce watering and mowing. Call 1-888-936-0444. Or visit the website at www.turfmedics.com to learn more about Turf Medics. Buy ProTurf, the real experts in real green grass.
Our show today sponsored by Turf Medics and Lorenzo Neal, thanks to him. So hey, good idea to paint your lawn, Doug, right, rather than water?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a great idea, if he's got a formula that lasts longer than a few days, that's...
Why not?
Why not?
You know, your neighbors will think that, hey, you're wasting water. Anyway, back to the rate, so I asked Mark Standriff, city spokesman for, obviously, the city of Fresno, if he wanted to debate you here on the program on Tuesday, and I think there's a lack of communication, because he kept thinking it was Friday, he's unavailable today. Well, we couldn't do it today, and I keep asking him about Tuesday, and I never got a response. So do you think that he really wants to debate you, or do you think he's kind of backing away?
Well, he's supposed to be the chief of communication, and if he can't communicate, he's got a problem.
Yeah.
And it seems like he can't communicate with you.
Are you willing to debate him?
I'm willing to debate anybody, at any time, on this subject, on Fresno's water rates, Fresno's water system, what we need, anytime, anyplace.
You know, I'd like to do this program on Tuesday, if we can, we got another phone call here. Good morning, caller, you're on the air, what's your question? Quickly, running out of time.
Yes, my question is this, I've been listening to the guest.
Gotta be quick, gotta be quick.
He says that the, a lot of the experts don't really know, they said that this is going down, the groundwater is going down, and you hear about a lot of the water, that surface water is going off into the ocean in Northern California, and then, you know, that, you know, I don't know what to believe, because then he says, "There's so many, I don't know, so much water under the ground," and how does he know if the experts don't know? I'm just wondering, because I don't know what the answer is.
Okay.
Everybody seems to be talking in circles.
All right, thank you for the call, sir, I appreciate it very much. Well, Doug?
Well, that information's from the same source.
Which is?
It's not from me, the 93 million acre-feet is agreed upon, approximate amount of water that sits in the...
Who that source, what's the source?
USGS, Department of Water Resources, et cetera, all agree.
All right.
And our ag districts all agree that we sit in a sub-basin, it's called the Kings River Subbasin, that has 93 million acre-feet in it.
Okay, let me ask you, I got one minute, you can come back, maybe not Monday, but at some point here. Okay, you signed this deal, they can't raise the rates for six months, what happens after six months? They can raise the rates as high as they want?
Yes.
They can?
As much as the people will let them, yes.
All right, and my question, how could, you know, why'd you sign a deal like that?
Well, because I wanted to save the people millions of dollars, and the one way to do that is to allow them to, one, have a six-month stand-down, and, two, they have to come up with a whole new way of noticing the people, that their protest now can be a free, self-dressed, stamped envelope, where alls they do is check protest and sign and drop it in the mail, they don't have to go find a blank letterhead or envelope and write their name and address on it.
All right, so you saved the voters millions of dollars.
That's right.
By not going to the ballot, yeah, box.
That's right, that's the only thing I would accomplish by the ballot box, by the way, is resetting the rates, nothing more.
All right, I'm gonna try to get that debate lined up between you and Mark Standriff, I'll work on it, okay?
Thank you, while you work on it, thank you.
Okay, Monday, it's Dennis Hart here on Connect With Me, thanks to Turf Medics and Lorenzo Neal, have a great weekend, we'll see you back here on Monday. Thanks, Doug.
Tonight, I want to discuss the importance of television media to the American people.